School District 67 Board of Education for June 25, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Eileen.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Here.
Mrs. Sands.
Here.
Mr. Burkowski.
Here.
Dr. Lemke.
Here.
Mr. Engeland.
Here.
Mr. Chung.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. There is no president's report this month. We move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burkowski. We are again in the midst of a very busy summer. We have a number of improvement and our maintenance projects underway. These include removing a number of classroom dividers in Everett and Sheridan, which effectively blocked the line of sight for our classroom teachers. The dividers included sinks, and that means that their removal is relatively easy and was done in-house. But the reinstallation of the sinks and drains to perimeter walls is, on the other hand, quite involved. We're installing ramps at Sheridan and Deer Path, and each of these is quite involved. In the case of Deer Path entails cutting into the existing floor. And due to elevation differences at Cherokee, we are installing a new, more usable lift in lieu of a ramp. Additionally, we have a building-wide project going on at Cherokee to remove all existing insulation on our dual-zone piping and rebalancing the airflow above the ceiling. For some time, we've had a sweating pipe issue at Cherokee, which has been incredibly vexing, and this has led to this comprehensive attempt to address it. As Rebecca Jenkins will mention in a few minutes, we have a great many professional development opportunities occurring in the district this summer. In this room, just this past week, we had a room full of teachers for two full days of CHAMP's training. Our online registration has gone remarkably well, with over 90 percent of our parents having already registered their students before the deadline. And finally, I wanted to mention briefly, had cause to review what we had done in terms of proactive safety and security measures in the district. And those of us that were putting this together were surprised and realize how many things that you've done until you put it all together and take time to assemble it all. So we have ongoing meetings and trainings. It's easy to forget that seven years ago, we did not have an SRO in the school district. And the SRO participates in our annual safety meetings, where we have teachers and specialists and administrative staff and Board of Ed reps, and police are there as well. We have a district safety committee that meets quarterly. We have changed our management policies and protocols, and we have a web-based system in place for that. We have all new, all of our new staff receive security overview at summer orientation. We've also expanded the professional development opportunities for mental health, for our social workers, psychologists, and other staff. In terms of safety reviews, we've hired a national safety expert to collaborate with us and review our plans. From 2017 to 2019, we've done physical site assessments in 2011 and 2018. Now, these were conducted using a patented format. We have procedural changes. As I mentioned, we have the Raptor visitor management system. We also have a behavior threat assessment procedure that is, uses a multidisciplinary team that is by its nature proactive. Physical changes, the most obvious of those are the addition of the vestibules, but we also have locked doors throughout the course of the day. We've eliminated the entry to the rear of Deer Path during the school day, and changed our visitor parking to the front. And we've made curricular changes as well in the form of CHAMP's and the adoption of Lions Quest. And we've also had staffing changes with, again, the resource officer is now daily at Deer Path and housed there. We have social-emotional learning committees, SEL buildings in all buildings. We have a .5 SEL teaching and learning coordinator, a dean of culture position at Deer Path, a social worker in every school, along with school psychs at every school, and if we've hired an additional school psychologist at Deer Path as well. All of this work was done thoughtfully and proactively, and I'd like to thank the board for their willingness to support these initiatives to keep all of our students safe. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike, any questions or comments for the superintendent? We now move to our first public participation. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we move on to our admin reports. Strategic plan end of year report, Rebecca and Mike.
Good evening. I'm very excited to share our instructional strategic plan update for the year with you. And I will expand a little bit on some of the topics that Mike covered in relation to social-emotional learning, culture, and safety. One of the areas that I wanted to highlight, because you have the report to read in depth, and I'm happy to answer any questions in relation to that, was the social-emotional learning highlights that we've completed throughout this year. So if we think about our mission and vision, what we're trying to attain is a balanced sense of self for our students and a safe and respectful environment and individuals. If you think about social-emotional learning, break it down into three parts. We have the guaranteed and viable curriculum. We also have classroom and school management and culture, and then we have the supports that we provide students. So if we look at curriculum, three years ago, we drafted the written social-emotional learning curriculum. The next year, we piloted and researched programs and resources to implement. And this year, we did the implementation of that program and resource, the program and resource, which Mike states is Lions Quest. K-4, the implementation went wonderful. Full implementation, and 5-8, as we know, is a little bit harder to really engage the students and ensure that they buy in and we're hitting all of the right topics. So we do have to continue our work next year and really dig in a little bit deeper to ensure that the 5-8 social-emotional learning curriculum is where we want it. So we will continue that work in the coming year. If we switch to that management strand, CHAMP's was a huge focus this year, and 109 out of 200 teachers have been trained in implementing CHAMP's in the classroom. And we also still have one more session of professional development this summer and one session on Institute Day. So we anticipate by the time school starts, about 80 percent of our staff members will be trained and fully implementing that program. And by the end of next year, it will have reached all of our students and all of our teachers throughout the district. So a huge success. Management also, 100 percent of our administrators have been trained in the walkthrough tool. So knowing when to go into classrooms, what exactly to look for, how to engage with teachers, provide them feedback, and growing opportunities to make sure that that's implemented appropriately. And if you think about supports, six, we had a 67 percent increase in early, the use of early-stage intervention. At the beginning of the year, we started with 6 percent of teachers saying that they used early-stage interventions. And I know Kate Kavanaugh came to a meeting or two ago and shared about early-stage intervention. And so that's a huge success for us that we'll continue to capitalize on and improve. And then this year, we also researched and piloted screeners. So that baseline, we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and then we have a screener that will help us identify students who may need Tier Two and Tier Three supports in the social-emotional learning skills. So a wonderful success, still continued work to do. Another area I just want to highlight is our professional development program. Again, one of your core values is world-class educators. And to retain, first of all, retain and have those individuals want to come and join our school district. Your professional development program is second to none. It is amazing. There is choice for teachers, but there is also kind of a bottom line of what needs to be accessed so that we ensure that all of our students are receiving a good instruction and that the teachers are trained, but yet a lot of voice and choice. This summer alone, there's 28 academies being offered, and we had 281 registrations. Topics included CHAMP's, SEL, co-teaching, digital portfolios. We have a 95 percent satisfaction rate that's self-reported by teachers, and we've seen that increase continually year after year, and the reason being that we have that focused strategic plan. We know what we're working on, our professional development is aligned to that plan. But we also give opportunity for teachers to say, this is something I'd like to learn about. And as long as there's value and connectedness to our mission and vision, we're always open to allowing for that continued professional development out of personal interest. We offer academy cadres after school that are long-term learning, so that's a 15-hour commitment after school in a couple highlighted areas. We offer academy courses like this summer, Institute Days, Mentor Program, and we've invested in professional learning partners so teachers can go into other teachers' classrooms, teach side-by-side, provide them feedback, model lessons for them. So all of these opportunities are focused on our strategic plan outcomes and ultimately getting us closer to the district vision. But we're very proud of our professional development that we've created over the past few years. The last highlight is instructional and assessment, and we're really striving to become that innovative learning community that educates without boundaries. So this year, 100 percent of our students have created a digitally-owned portfolio, and there's, that's important for a couple reasons. We know research says that when students document and reflect upon their learning, it sticks with them. And also, the iPad that you allowed us to utilize in K-1 and next year in second and fifth grade really expands on the opportunity for creation. So students can snap pictures of their learning, quickly reflect, create even a video about their learning. And I think you saw, I think Mike showed a video of a first grader kind of reflecting upon their, their experience in, I think it was math. And then 50 percent of teacher, increase of teachers' perception of their co-teaching partnership. That's a huge success. So walking into this year, the belief of what co-teaching is, how do we do it, how do we make sure this is effective, and we had a 50 percent increase self-reported by teachers. They feel like they're in a better place, they feel like they know what they're supposed to be doing. And we took the Ed Committee on visits, and they saw that co-teaching in action. We have also prepared for heterogeneous mixed ability fifth-grade ELA classrooms. Fifth-grade teachers are ready and excited to implement that, and you've added an advanced learning specialist to ensure that we're meeting all students' needs in that differentiated, differentiated setting. We completed accelerated placement procedures for K-1, not as exciting as some of the others, but still very important. It's a legal requirement, and we want to make sure that all students have access at their next level of challenge. And the one area, I shouldn't have ended with this, we fell a little short, but we do have a reason and a direction to move forward, was the science assessments. We did a lot of assessment work. What we really found is that where we're teaching some of our science units, they aren't appropriate, that we need to really dig in with our teachers and make sure that they're at the right level, the right grade level, and that they're preparing the students for the next year. So before we can move to assessment work, we kind of have to take two steps back, ensure that that's right, and we really need our teachers involved in that. We want them to own it, because we know if they own it, it's just going to go a lot better. So we're going to take a step back next year, work on that, and then move into the assessment work. So I know there's a lot more in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about what's in here or anything that was highlighted.
Thanks, Rebecca. Questions for Rebecca or Mike on the strategic plan end of year report?
You said there was a 50 percent improvement in the opinion of co-teaching. What did that go from where to where?
It's actually in the report, and off the top of my head, I feel like it went from 33 to 70-something, but it's written in here. So if we just delve into here, we can find that.
That's my bad, I didn't.
No, no, that's, there's a lot of writing. Oh, and I, the, oh, say it again, Susan?
Sorry. The increase, the percentage of partnerships who are identifying as true co-teaching relationships, presence, planning, problem-solving, and processing, went from 32 percent at the start of the school year to 55 percent at the end of the school year.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think the number's supposed to be 75, but yes, that's, yeah, that was our error.
That's a heck of a lot more than 50 percent, so that's impressive.
Right. Yeah, that's great. And then the Ed Committee also, this always goes to Ed Committee first, and we really had an exciting conversation, and you're going to see a little, a few tweaks to the actual document and format when we bring back the strategic plan in the fall. So we're excited about that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So just your, your comments about the science assessment reminded me, since we had a graduating eighth grader this year, there were some conversations around the dinner table from his older brother and sister relative to preparedness for the high school. And we got to talking about their experiences when they moved from eighth grade into the high school. And one of the things that, that I heard was there remains a level of misalignment in terms of kids moving from eighth grade into the high school. In some classes, they felt they were overly prepared, and that they felt like they took a step back when they got to the high school, and in others, they felt as if there were gaps. What kind of ongoing conversations do the two districts have to ensure that we get away from that, that either the high school can accelerate some of their teaching opportunities perhaps, and I realize Lake Bluff's involved in this as well, but, or that Deer Path needs to make sure they're appropriately preparing kids for the high school?
That's a really good question, and that will be part of the science dialogue next year, because when we're making sure that these units of study are in the right spot, we also want to make sure that they're preparing them for the high school level as well. And it might even prompt a conversation at the high school of where, what topics they're covering where. So that it will be part of our journey next year. And we do have continued dialogue where we've done excellent job with that, is in math, in world language. Where we continue to need to refine and focus a little bit more is science and ELA. So that is on our radar, great point.
Those are the two areas that were discussed. So that's, that's very helpful. That's good. Good to know we're doing it. Thanks.
I just want to say publicly, thank you to you and your team for putting together this report and the, and the plan, because I know a ton of work goes into, and a lot of people contribute to this report each year and throughout the year, and it just seems to keep getting better and be a more effective tool, not only for communicating to us, but also for driving the work. So thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Rebecca, if you were to look over the, as you're working on the presentation, is there anything that really sticks out for you that you would want to say, yeah, I'd like to highlight this one thing I'm particularly proud of over the past year?
That's a very hard question. I think, I honestly think we have so much to be proud of, and there's so much, people make it look easy, and this is a huge organizational direction. I think the one thing I'm probably most proud of is the investment in the co-teaching this year. So that's been an ongoing journey for the district, and I think our teachers were asking us for clarity, professional development and support in that area. So only, however, it only touches 20, 30 percent of our staff and students, I think we did that very well, and that they feel very successful in their journey.
And we had a chance to see Ed Committee, we had a chance to go to a building, and the building that, that I saw, took some videos of and used repeatedly since then, was just absolutely a masterpiece of instructional pedagogy and partnership in every way. So I mean, that was really one of the best things we did all year, I think, so.
May I add one more? I know you said one, but I do, Mike and I were talking today about teacher efficacy and teachers having voice and feeling like they're empowered and can make a difference, and I think we've really done that with our professional development program. When we, when I walked into the district, the satisfaction rate was probably around 60 percent, but if you give people choice and voice and treat them as professionals and ask them what they need alongside of a guaranteed professional development coursework, they, I think that they feel very respected and that they're treated as professionals and we're continuing to grow.
Well, and when you say choice and voice, I think even though there are these requirements, like you have to learn about CHAMP's, because that's what we're doing, but I think if, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the education committee, what you've talked about is, if for you, that doesn't mean sitting through the workshop, because you actually already have some experience with it, so you're going to do it in a different way, there are these multiple entry points for the same content so that it meets the differentiated needs of our teachers. So we're doing a good job of differentiating for them, in addition to asking them to differentiate for kids, is that?
Yes. Everyone, we believe, has a different season of life and a different learning style, and we want to respect that with our staff just as much with our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, in our board packet, we received a post issuance tax compliance report from Jen and the business office. Are there, there no formal report given to us, other than that we all read it very carefully? Are there any questions for Jen or her team on the post issuance tax compliance report? Excellent report, no questions. Moving on, board committee reports. Suzanne heads up the Board Education Committee. You can give a report if you like.
I don't have a report, because we didn't have.
Fantastic. We'll move on to the Board Finance and Ops. Rob?
Yeah, Finance and Ops, Matt. Jen updated us with the budget we're about to, the temporary, or proposed budget that we're about to put on display later. It's a very good meeting, and everyone was in favor of the budget as proposed, so.
Excellent. Any questions for Rob or the Finance and Ops Committee? Policy, Jeff.
The District 67 Policy Committee met on Thursday, May 30, in joint session with the District 115 Policy Committee to discuss press issue 100 and conduct a five-year review on several, several other policies. We also reviewed and updated the District 67 Policy Committee Charter. Since all of this will be discussed later on in the meeting during action items, I will not go into further detail at this time. We do not currently have another policy committee meeting scheduled, but I suspect we'll have one probably in August or September, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions for the Compensation Committee? I'm sorry, questions for the Policy Committee? Compensation Committee chaired by Jeff.
The newly reformed and rejuvenated District 67 Compensation Committee met this morning, June 25, here on the West Campus. The committee consists of myself, board members Justin Engeland and Suzanne Sands, as well as Mike Simic, Rebecca Jenkins, and Jennifer Hermes from the administration. All members were present for the meeting. Our initial charge is threefold. One, to review all of the District 67 administrative roles, including shared service, and ensure that there are clear, concise role descriptions in place for each one. Two, to build off the wonderful work done by Dr. Lemke and others a few years back and develop a district philosophy, actually codify and document a district philosophy relative to compensation and how we compare shared service positions with similar roles in our single district peers. And three, to develop salary bands for each administrative position based on the district's compensation philosophy, philosophy, and begin applying those in 2020. Today was the committee's first meeting, and we spent our time together discussing the committee's purpose and areas of focus going forward as a basis for developing our committee charter. I am pleased to say that we had a lively and engaged discussion, and we agreed to some high-level expectations regarding our reason for being and what the committee needs to be focused on as we move forward. Our next steps are to have our charter fully developed by the next meeting, and then flesh out a project plan that will deliver a recommendation to the board in time for our next round of staff compensation discussions, which are in March. We have two meetings scheduled going forward. Our first one is Monday, July 15, at 8:00 a.m., and the next one will be Thursday, August 15, at 8:30 a.m., both here at the West Campus. Thank you.
Fantastic. Questions for Jeff or the Compensation Committee? Let's move on to liaison reports. First up, Suzanne, NSSED.
So the NSSED Leadership Council last met on June 12. Dr. Snyder reported on collaborative work with Atiya Middle School staff in Glenview District 34, and a visit to the Stoughton Area School District in Stoughton, Wisconsin, with administrators from Lake Forest District 67 and 115. He also shared that approximately 125 individuals took part in the learning and discussion of special education history and best practices with former Assistant Secretary of Education Madeline Will when she was in town. As the school year wrapped up, North Shore Academy, North Shore Academy Elementary, and Arbor all held their graduations, and the APS Board honored member district and NSSED staff, for exemplary work related to inclusive best practices. And all of the staff end-of-year celebrations spotlighted the many wonderful individuals across all stakeholder groups who've contributed professionally to the organization for many years. Also, we had a report on professional learning. Lindsay Crowley, who is the Director of Professional Learning, Professional Development and Coaching at NSSED, reported that during 2018-19, the NSSED Professional Learning and District Services Coaching Department supported educators across the member districts in a variety of formats, workshops, coaching, and professional learning planning. The department hosted over 200 workshops, open to all member district employees, reaching approximately 3,600 educators. District Services coaches engaged in job-embedded coaching in 80 percent of schools in the member districts. And the professional learning module of Midas Education, which is their new information systems, system, was implemented for registration, and the department is developing its capability to generate analytics. And the analytics, along with the cooperative system assessments tool, will enable NSSED to provide more targeted professional learning to member districts and in-house. We also passed the FY '20 final budget, so that NSSED tries to be ahead on that, so that member districts can take into account tuition increases and membership increases, and I shared all that with the board when that was happening.
Thank you, Suzanne. Questions for Suzanne about NSSED? Moving on to Legislative Liaison, Alice.
Thanks. The 2019 spring legislative session was a mixed bag for public school districts. There were some positives, such as the General Assembly approving a balanced budget that contained an increase of $375 million for the evidence-based funding model. A school construction program is in the works that will fuse $1.5 billion of new money for school construction and maintenance across the state. No details yet, though, how a school district can be approved for the new funding or what the criteria will entail. The legislature will be dictating to local school districts exactly how much of the funding will be spent, and the new requirement is the statutory increase in the minimum teacher's salary. So about one-half of all Illinois school districts will be impacted directly by the mandate once it's enacted. Along with the increase for teachers, the minimum wage for all workers will be increased to $15 over the next six years. Lawmakers also addressed the teacher shortage by approving bills that end the test of basic skills as a prerequisite for receiving a teaching license, and that extends for two more years of flexibility to allow a teacher to return to teaching in subject shortage areas without impairing his or her retirement status. Also, a bill was enacted to revert back to a prescriptive five-hour clock day, minimum school day for funding purposes. New instruction will have to be provided in the curriculum to teach about the diversity of our society, including the role and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals in society. Teach civics in grades six through eight, teach about consent to sexual activity and sex education classes, and specifically teach the history of Illinois in history classes. As you can see, it was a pretty busy spring session. All of this is available and will be printed and distributed to school districts, as well as posted on the IASB website. Thank you.
Thanks. Alice, any questions for Alice regarding legislative matters? Seeing none, we move on to the Spirit of 67 Foundation. Rich?
Thank you. On June 5, I was able to attend the Spirit of 67 Old New Board Coffee. I introduced myself as the Board Liaison, and I reiterated what a great organization of volunteers the Spirit of 67 is to the community. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Questions regarding the spirit for Rich? Well done. Executive APT, Suzanne.
I have not met with the Executive APT as of yet, and will report back in the fall when they start meeting.
Excellent. Any other liaisons that I've missed? We now move to the second public participation moment. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the board, now is a fine time. Jordan? No? Okay. We move to action items. First up, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution to display fiscal year 2020 tentative budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the tentative budget being displayed? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Engeland.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mr. Chung.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the Administrator 2019-2020 compensation as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion regarding the admin comp? Seeing no comments, roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Burkowski.
Aye.
Dr. Lemke.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the Deer Path Middle School Assistant Principal one-year contract as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding the Assistant Principal one-year contract?
Mike, do you want to just talk a little bit about who he is and background, or she?
The district has entered into an agreement with Sam Paulson, and Sam's background, Sam's got a really interesting background. Comes to us after five years of teaching and is he's very pleased to join us. I had a chance to spend some time with him, and pulling up his resume right now. Tom and his team at the building really felt like they had gone through a lengthy process looking for some, looking for an appropriate candidate, and really felt like Sam was the ideal candidate for them. He's currently the Dean of Students at Lincoln Junior High. Prior to that, he was a special ed teacher at Glenbrook South High School for five years, but he's also got a really long and interesting background with both volunteer and camp experiences behind him in a wide range of places. So, he's very excited to be here, and I think that he's a very promising administrator for us for the future as well.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Food Service Intergovernmental Agreement with Lake Bluff District 65?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions regarding the IGA with Lake Bluff District 65?
I should just speak briefly and applaud Jen for her work on this. This came through Finance and Ops. Basically, it's a win-win where we're the win on both of those. So, we're getting, we're improving our contract with Quest to the tune of about 10 grand. Lake Bluff is purchasing something from us to the tune of about 10 grand, and it doesn't actually have any other effects on us directly, and so it really is a win-win, and we still plan on rebidding food service in the fall, so.
Nice work, Jen. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Quest contract for Lake Bluff District 65 Food Service?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? So, this is related to the prior item, I assume, where...
They're just two different contracts.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Bur, Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the Board delegated levels of authority as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Jen, for public, can you give 30-second overview of this, please?
Sure. As we go through the construction process, we occasionally will run into things that we need to make decisions. Sometimes they're a little quicker than others. So, basically, this is giving Administration the authority to act on the Board's behalf up to a certain dollar amount, up to 15,000, without having to notify the Board first. Above that amount, we notify the Board, and if it's anything above a really certain amount, we make sure it gets on the next Board meeting, and there's other notification things.
And these are consistent with what we've done previous years?
We've approved them every single time we've done construction so we can keep the projects timely.
Other comments or questions?
And this is because we don't have a meeting in July, therefore, if anything came up during the summer, it would be very difficult to pull the Board...
We would do it still even if we had a meeting in July, because oftentimes there's, I mean, we have a contingency already allocated as part of the project, but it's the ability for me to use that contingency in smaller increments as things come up on a daily basis.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the casework and plumbing bid for Sheridan and Everett Schools in the amount of $205,287.80.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the CLIC Workers' Compensation Contract Renewal in the amount of $50,298.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the CLIC Liability Insurance Contract Renewal in the amount of $66,216.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Deer Path Middle School Writing Surfaces Bid in the amount of $43,456.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Siemens Proposal Phase II in the amount of $31,900.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the three-year Internet Service Provider Contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes.
You may jump in.
Just trying to figure out the best time to jump in. I have to abstain from this one due to a potential conflict of interest that just developed. Thank you.
Duly noted.
And I have a question. Jordan, would you briefly explain whether, and if so, if the, and why the work that we had done out in front of Deer Path affected this and how that all played out?
Sure. So, over the past two years, we've been doing a lot of work on improving our infrastructure for telephony, so for our telephones, and for our wider networking infrastructure. Probably about a year ago, we entered into a contract with AT&amp;T. It's a cost savings measure that we took pricing from a number of providers on to for our outbound telephony in District 67, so all our outbound phone links. One of the parts of that contract was that AT&amp;T would bring fiber into the building. So, Deer Path is now served by Comcast and AT&amp;T Fiber directly into the building. Essentially, this makes any other pricing that we want to get on telephone service or Internet services significantly more competitive because the infrastructure is already in place.
And who paid for that work that was done along Deer Path? Was all that was dug up about two years ago, I believe it was?
AT&amp;T covered all of the infrastructure work outside Deer Path, and they even covered the infrastructure work we had to do within Deer Path to complete our end of that contract.
Excellent work.
Mike, one comment. Just, Jordan, thank you for all of your work on this. This is another example of a win-win for the taxpayers as well as the students and the Administration and faculty just getting better service, much lower cost. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
And Mrs. Levert will abstain.
Motion carried? Excellent. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Press Issue 100 and five-year updates?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding Press Issue 100 and the five-year updates?
Yes. Couple of things that I do want to point out. All of the Board members have a printout of Policy 4.110 dealing with transportation. That policy, as delivered by Press, in the second paragraph talks about the Illinois State Board of Education, Division of Funding and Disbursement Services provides a parent-guardian-state-pupil transportation reimbursement program, say that three times fast, claim with school personnel, in which school personnel enter into the parent-guardian-pupil transportation claim system. We questioned what that meant and what that was. There was some confusion, specifically by me relative to, I know that in the past, there was a claim that parents could give to the state and get reimbursed for their transportation. Eileen did some investigation work and determined that is not what this is referring to. What it's referring to is a claim that districts can make if they own their own transportation to the state. So, the committee felt that it would be beneficial to add some additional verbiage in this policy for our district that specifically states that the parent-guardian-pupil transportation reimbursement program is only available in districts that own and utilize their own transportation. District 67 contracts with an outside third party to provide transportation to students. As a result, this program is not currently available in District 67. We felt that was helpful for future policy committees and boards to just understand what this is and the fact that we are not eligible to receive it. So, that was an amendment made to the original recommendation from Press. So, wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanted to point out is you also have a printout of Policy 4.190, Targeted School Violence Prevention Program. Initially, the committee felt that this particular policy, it is a new policy, and we felt that it was, sorry?
Board doesn't have it. I just left it.
Oh, just me?
Yeah.
Oh. All right. Sorry about that. But, there is a new policy called the Targeted School Violence Prevention Program. This is being recommended by Press based on legislation that has passed as well as research that's been done at the state level. Initially, the committee felt this was somewhat redundant policy since much of what's in there is already captured in other policies that we have. We felt that it in some ways added an additional administrative burden that was not necessary. However, on the recommendation of Mr. Simic, based on additional research and input from the community, we believe that we should go ahead and recommend this new policy as it is currently written. So, that will be, that is why that is remaining in the packet this time. And that's it, I think. So, I wanted to clarify that for everybody, just to get, kind of get where you were, where the policy committee came out on this.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I wanted to briefly expand upon the why behind my recommendation for Policy 4:190. One of the things that has changed in terms of providing social and physical safety for students is more and more efforts to be proactive rather than reactive. So, what this does is it requires the creation of teams within the district but also within building level. So, when a student becomes a person of concern within the building, the first thing is to try to find out as many, get as many data points on what might be motivating the student to behave in a certain way, and then determine whether the student may or may not be a threat to himself or others. And it is not a disciplinary process as it begins. It's one of the most important aspects of it is to find out what might be motivating these specific behaviors. This policy is in practice and is intended, it's an outgrowth of work done in the state of Virginia following the Virginia Tech tragedy there. Virginia's become a leader in these things, and what this is, is an application of a best practice that they have learned there, to proactively engage their staff, proactively engage their students, to try to avoid any sort of mishap within a building.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2019 through 2021 Policy Committee Charter?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
Essentially, the charter remains unchanged from the previous charter except to add verbiage that specifically says one of the purposes of the committee is to annually review and update as needed the District 67 Board Operating Procedures Manual. When we passed the manual two years ago, that was one of the expectations, but it was not clearly articulated in the charter. So, we just added that, as well as changing the membership to reflect the fact that Mr. Engeland and Mr. Chung are now members of the committee. I will say, one other thing is under the areas of focus, again, the reviewing of the District 67 Board Operating Procedures Manual is now an additional area of focus for the committee.
Thanks, Jeff. Other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?